Good evening. I'll call this meeting to order, our first meeting of 2025, the City Council, at 6:04. So could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Hagley.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harrod.
Here.
Mayor Mitchell.
Here, thank you. I just want to say I'm excited to have this opportunity to actually see you all in person and not on a Zoom lens, as I did all my other mayor duties, so this is pretty exciting. So we'll get this started. So if you could join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
移到
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And a report on closed session, we did have a closed session, there is no reportable action. Announcements and presentations, doesn't look like we have any tonight. And the City Manager reports. City Manager Kay.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of very quick reports for the council this evening, two updates actually from our fire department. I wanted to share, I think most significantly, just an update on the completion of some prescribed burns that were completed on Fitch Mountain right around the end of the year. A total of almost 300 piles of debris and potential fire fuel were burned with no incident, obviously, and everything went smoothly. It's a big deal for those who haven't. I think we all know we've had issues with with fire fuels up there, it's a fire risk area, and also some invasive species, which are particularly sensitive and pretty impressive for me to see. You all know that our fire department's been doing a lot of fuels management work over the last many years, but really heightened over the last few years. The concentration of what was done on Fitch Mountain was really impressive for me to see and the amount of planning and strategy that went into that. And also, the timing and organization that goes into those prescribed burns was really something else. Other entities, other fire districts in the area, CAL FIRE, participate with our team, obviously, we would not. And then watching the weather forecasts is something, I don't remember how many months it was, but it was a lot, waiting for just the right scenario where it's not too much moisture to burn, and obviously, there's not risk of fire conditions. Lot went into it, and for those of us who don't get up there in the winter as much as we'd like, I really do, I encourage people when you have a chance to have a look at the cleaning and the pile burns that took place up there. I know I feel, as a resident, a lot safer about one particular area that could have been a source of a threat in our community, and it's the result of an awful lot of hard work, certainly by our team and our fire department, but also some regional partners. So just for those who maybe not see that every day, hopefully, people saw as we put out notices to the community that if they saw smoke up on the mountain, not to be concerned. But beyond that, I'd recommend to people have a look, and I just wanted to highlight that good work. One more going forward for the fire department, the annual Bucket Brigade Blood Drive is this, if I can see it, Wednesday, at the fire department, all afternoon, starting, it looks like at 1:30. It is possible on the fire department Facebook page to make Buckins. Obviously, it's a good cause, it's also a, I think, annual competition and point of pride for our department to be among the best of our peers or the best. So it's first and foremost, obviously, a good thing for people to do, but we also, we like to win that competition with other departments. So encourage people, if you haven't already, to make an appointment, or just come on down to the fire department. And then one other thing on the, well, two other things on the calendar I wanted to mention. Tomorrow will be an initial meeting and orientation of our Arts Commission. That orientation is going to be very nuts and bolts on some bureaucratic and administrative matters as they get off and running, so in and of itself, maybe not the most exciting meeting, but it is exciting that that commission, obviously, is formed and beginning its work. So in that sense, it represents just a nice milestone, and as they get through that basic orientation, moving then into the meat of the work that they'll be doing is exciting. And so I just wanted to share that after a whole lot of work by a lot of people, first among them, this council, which really drove that effort, we have a commission formed, and they'll be off and running starting tomorrow. And then lastly, I won't spend too much time, because we'll talk during our public hearing, but just a reminder for those who might be with us at this early part of the meeting is that we'll have a community meeting next week as part of the districting process. So that will be next Thursday at the Community Center. We'll talk about it more in the course of the public hearing, but while I've got you, I just wanted to note that it's an opportunity for people to weigh in and provide feedback in a setting that's a little bit less formal than these council meetings. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for the City Manager? No. So I know we have a 6:15 start time for the public hearing. Do we have time to do the public comment on the general items? I think we do? Okay. So we'll start with that now, then. Our public comments on items on the consent calendar and non-agenda items. This time is set aside to receive comments from the public regarding matters of general interest, not on the agenda, but related to City Council business. Pursuant to the Brown Act, however, the City Council cannot consider any issues or take action on any requests during this comment period. Do we have people who would like to speak in this general comment? Welcome.
Good evening, Council, and my name is Ty Benoit, 528 Brown Street. I'm here tonight on behalf of Climate Action Healdsburg, and I noticed that you didn't have any proclamations tonight, so we have one. This is a proclamation congratulating Assistant City Manager Andrew Sturmfels on his new position with Sonoma County, and recognizing the contributions that he has made to the Healdsburg community, specifically future generations who will be the beneficiaries of a climate-forward effort that began in 2023. Whereas Andrew Sturmfels has done an exemplary job of leading city staff and coordinating with the residents of Healdsburg to develop and implement a climate mobilization strategy, and whereas Andrew Sturmfels has always been extremely gracious about addressing many different types of community groups, balancing their concerns, listening to various ideas, supporting the climate fests in 2023 and '24, and writing grants which tapped into opportunities for funding climate projects. And whereas Andrew Sturmfels always answered our frequent and sometimes annoying emails and responded in a highly professional, patient manner. And whereas Andrew Sturmfels always kept channels of communication open even when the conversations were difficult. And whereas Andrew Sturmfels has demonstrated the ability to evaluate the need to redo an exercise that didn't quite work the first time around. And whereas Andrew Sturmfels is the type of manager and communicator who doesn't want to waste time developing a document that will just gather dust on a shelf. Therefore, be it proclaimed that Climate Action Healdsburg celebrates the accomplishments and contributions to the community by Andrew Sturmfels. We applaud your efforts and recognize that the climate mobilization strategy might not have happened without your commitment and guidance. We wish you well in your next position. Sonoma County is lucky to have you, but we are glad you'll still be in Healdsburg. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you for that. Anybody else? Welcome.
Hello there, Council. Dan Pizza. You touched on earlier about the closed-session meeting you had, and I think it's important to disclose a little bit more what that meeting was about. It was about a letter from John Eisenberg dated December 26 regarding the activities from Measure O and what the City Council was doing at that time. And he found that there were multiple violations of the Brown Act, unlawful expenditure of public funds, including $62,000, to retain a political consultant firm to get a winning result for Measure O, failure to maintain records, failure to make records available, knowingly making false and misleading statements, and prohibited campaigning by council members Harrod and Kelly promoting Measure O. So it's good that you had this closed session to address it, and as you recall, I appeared before this council two times recently, once to alert you that Chris Harrod was attacking me personally while promoting Measure O on his City Council newsletter, and another time to inform you that Ariel Kelly was promoting Measure O on social media while spreading lies about my reasons for opposing Measure O. Both of these complaints were ignored. In fact, after Measure O was soundly defeated, despite outspending the opposition $120,000 to $700, Chris Harrod blamed the voters as being misinformed by Internet trolls. This was clearly directed to me. It appears that it takes, even though I feel vindicated by this letter, it appears that it takes legal action in order to have the council take notice. I applaud John Eisenberg's work in uncovering the deception of our city officials. And one thing that did disappoint me is I didn't think the remedies he called for went far enough. I would encourage the council to take his demands seriously. As this goes to litigation, I would plan on joining this action, and my demands would be much more severe than his. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Welcome.
Thank you. A new face. My name is Earl Gwynn. I live at 231 Orchard Street in Riverside. My wife and I moved up here in 2005 from Santa Rosa. I worked for the County of Sonoma in the Treasurer Tax Collector's Office, and in fact, I handled the specific Plan Area A Special Assessment District. I was the special assessment supervisor. I spoke in this room back in 2010 or so because this county administrator was going to, he was having these budget workshops, but I came and spoke about something else, and I helped Mike get elected to the County Board of Supervisors, Mike McGuire. I've spoken at board meetings more times than I can count, my first time here, though. I just wanted to follow up on the previous speaker's comments, but concentrate on the Brown Act, because a lot of people may not know what that's all about. If anybody lives in a homeowners association, they know we're governed by the Davis Sterling Act, which in many ways is similar to the Brown Act. It tells us how we have to conduct our business. I was on a school board in Roseland. I was the board president for two years. I didn't get reelected, unfortunately, but then we moved out of the area anyway and came up here. And I had conversations with the superintendent from time to time, and one time we were talking about an issue pertinent to the district, and he said, "Yeah, I've met with so-and-so, and I met with so-and-so, and I want to get your ideas." And I thought, oopsie, a serial Brown Act violation. And it is, the Brown Act is in place so that the public can have confidence that our elected representatives obey the laws and do business in legal and proper ways. And I'm feeling the disappointment that I've heard from lots of people in this lengthy letter. It's amazing. I don't know how the council and their administrative backup could get so far away from how it's supposed to be done. I'll yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Not seen anyone come up. I'll go ahead and close the public comment. And see a motion for approving the consent agenda?
移到
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, that passes. So now we go on to our public hearing, and we're pretty much right on time. Before we start the hearing, I want to, I have a statement that I'd like to read into the record for everyone, if you can bear with me for a minute. I know there's been a lot of questions and concerns about the direction our staff, our council provided at the first public hearing on December 16. I think it's important to clarify what actually happened at that meeting and what didn't happen at that meeting. When we first discussed moving to district elections on November 18, we learned that our staff and demographer needed guidance about the number of districts the City Council preferred. This direction would help focus their efforts moving forward. Part of this consideration included whether or not we should continue with an appointed mayor or move to an elected mayor position. At our December 16 meeting, a majority of the council expressed preference for implementing five districts and keeping our mayor's role as rotating and appointed by the council. This direction was simply meant to help our staff and demographer focus their efforts, ensuring we receive districting options that align with this guidance and allow us to meet our required timeline. I want to be very clear, there was no formal vote on December 16, and that was intentional. We were asked for direction and not a final action. We simply provided guidance as requested. Public participation is at the heart of the districting process, especially when it comes to determining district maps and understanding your thoughts about our communities of interest. Tonight, you'll hear about the various ways you can continue providing feedback, including submitting your own proposed district maps. Our online mapping tool will include options to submit varying numbers of districts, which would support an at-large or a rotating mayor. I understand some residents are frustrated that a majority of the council favors five districts. Believe me, we all share in the frustration of having to move through this process and move through it so quickly. But I want to emphasize that there's still time for residents to advocate for different approaches. We have upcoming community meetings, three public hearings after tonight. Speaking personally, while I believe five districts best align with our equity goals, I remain open to hearing other perspectives. So with that, I'd like to turn this over to our demographer.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. So my name is Liz Stitt. I am with Redistricting Partners. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, except I cannot, so one moment. This presentation is going to look very similar to last time, however, it will be a little bit shorter, so it's not going to take up an hour. And the whole purpose is to educate the public and let them know how they can get involved in the process. So should be able to see my screen now? Absolutely, let me bring this a little bit closer. Okay. So what we're going to go over tonight, very similar to last time, what is districting? The definition of it, what is the CVRA? We'll go over the public hearing schedule, and then get into the traditional redistricting, districting principles that we use to draw maps, and then talk about communities of interest, how that's applicable here, how the public can get involved, the population data that you all have, and then what's next. So first and foremost, districting is pretty simple. It's just the initial process of creating election districts. So clearly, we're going from at-large to districted, so instead of voting at the entire city, voters will have individual voting districts. So this determines two things. One, who is eligible to run for that seat, and two, who is eligible to vote in that election. So again, you have to live within that election district to run for that seat, and you have to live within that election district to vote for that seat. So that's what districting does do, and then this is what districting doesn't necessarily do. So folks tend to be concerned that districting will disrupt the city and how the City Council governs. That's more of a cultural issue, and if the City Council wants to continue to work together on citywide initiatives, they absolutely still can do that. And then, of course, this does not disrupt city services. So really, what this changes is the election process and nothing else in regards to the And then the California Voting Rights Act. So this was a law that was passed in the early 2000s with the, similar in kin to the Federal Voting Rights Act, which was a monumental piece of legislation from the 1960s. And with that, the federal civil, or the Federal Voting Rights Act, the, actually, I think I'm getting ahead of myself, so let me go back to the state law. It prohibits the use of at-large elections if the election system, if the local government is racially polarized, has racially polarized voting occurring. And so the definition of racially polarized voting is if there is a pattern within the voting electorate where there's a correlation of race, religion, national origin, and the So it's kin to the Federal Voting Rights Act in the sense that it is there to help protected classes. And the Federal Voting Rights Act uses majority-minority districts as a standard for vulnerability. The CVRA takes that standard and lowers the threshold to ability to influence in the election. And so the way that this law gets its teeth is through plaintiffs, lawyers, sending cities, municipalities, letters, letting them know that they could be violating the CVRA. And when that happens, there are safe harbor provisions that cities can follow in order to decrease any kind of plaintiff reimbursement. So it caps that reimbursement levels to about $30,000. Some of the safe harbor provisions that we're following, there's got to be at least five meetings. I know that we're doing five meetings and community outreach meetings as well, and the first two meetings, and this is the second meeting, the first two meetings have to be devoted to, well, it's the pre-map meetings. So they're devoted to educating the public, to getting testimony, collecting testimony about communities of interest, and maps from the public. And then the next three meetings will be devoted to providing maps and options and collecting maps from the public and assessing those maps for potential adoption. All of this needs to be completed within 90 days, with some exceptions, but this is a pretty fast turnaround. So even though this map won't be implemented for another couple of years, we still have to get this done within a pretty quick turnaround. So it's going to go by fast. So it's already the second meeting. At the next meeting, it will be our first post-map meeting. Before that, there is a January 16 public community outreach meeting, which I'll talk more about in a moment. Very much encourage the public to participate. And then February 18, you will get draft maps, along with all the maps submitted from the public. And then on March 17, that's when you need to whittle down the maps, and then April 7 is when you take that final vote. So this will go by fast. Here is the public hearing schedule, as I mentioned, hearing one, hearing two, education and testimony-based. Whenever we talk about maps, we have to publish those maps online, seven days in advance, just to talk about those maps. So any map that we discuss at the next meeting will have been posted seven days prior, so the public has the ability to view those maps before any decision is made. So let's get into the redistricting criteria that we use throughout this process. This is from the California Fair Maps Act. This is a ranked list of criteria. It's based on criteria that is used throughout the country, and it's really here to provide a transparent process for redistricting and trying to take out some of the nefarious parts of redistricting that people have associated with things like gerrymandering. So first and foremost, each election district has to be relatively equal in population size. And so we're looking at the US Census population when we're determining what is relatively equal. You'll also be getting other data, like the citizen voting age population, which I'll talk about when we go over how to draw maps. And so the city has a 10% total deviation that we're allowed to have when we're drawing maps. This is fairly generous, and when you look at things like Congress, when they redistrict, they can only have a difference of one person. So the fact that we get a 10% deviation means we get to keep together more communities and neighborhoods and things like that. And then we want to make sure that the map is contiguous. So this ensures that the election districts are whole pieces, and we're not going from one part of the city to the other part of the city and saying that's District One, for example. We want the whole district to be touching. Here's an example of what is considered not contiguous. You'll see that the purple district in the northern part of the city, it has a detached purple part. That really needs to be attached to the rest of that purple district in order for that to be considered contiguous. So this would be an example of what contiguity is not. And then there's also a different concept of contiguity. There is travel contiguity as well. So when we're drawing maps, we want to make sure that we can drive or walk in the district without having to leave that district. So if there's a barrier in the way, whether that's a highway, in this example, there is a railroad there that's dividing the city, and the city here, it was the city of Davis, they decided to use the railroad as a way to ensure that District Five is all travel And then we want to make sure that the lines are easy to identify and they're understandable. We're trying to follow things like natural boundaries or man-made boundaries, like that railroad example, and then keeping districts compact. So that's really where we're trying to avoid those funny-looking shapes that people associate with gerrymandering. So we're shooting for circles and squares and not ribbons and bows. This is an example of compactness. So on the left is a city that was drawn before the Fair Maps Act was law, and this very much influenced the Fair Maps Act. You can see that it divides throughout, on the left, it divides through the entire city. It splits downtown, numerous other neighborhoods, and it just so happened that all of those city council members maintained their seats. Kind of a coincidence. However, if you look at the right side, it is However, if you look at the right side, it is far more compact. This was drawn by an independent redistricting commission. And this ensured that communities were kept together. So that's the whole concept behind compactness and why it's important. And of course, we need to maintain communities of interest. So this law was implemented in 2019 before, and before then, cities had the opportunity to just pass a map on day one and not necessarily reach out to the community. And now this ensures that community members have to be a part of the process. California is very lucky to have this law. And so when we talk about communities of interest, try to think of it as a group of people who share similar policy concerns, whether they're neighbors or they go to the, their kids go to the same schools, something that unites them in a public policy setting, and they would benefit from being maintained together. So people are stronger when they are maintained with their community. So whether that's voting or advocating for themselves, we really want to try to keep together these communities in this drawing process. So characteristics include things like shared public policy concern, cultural districts, shared socioeconomic characteristics, housing, transportation. Those are the kind of things that can be considered a community of interest. We do like to consider them like building blocks of districts. So again, really trying not to divide them, but recognizing where they're located and trying to keep them together. This is subjective. It's open-ended to be as inclusive as possible. However, there are some examples that I'll get to on the next slide of what is not considered a community of interest by law. And then, of course, the Voting Rights Act does recognize groups like Latinos, Asians, African-Americans as a community. However, unless there's a Section 2 noncompliance issue, we cannot consider race as a predominant factor when drawing. And so I like to show this to show how expansive communities of interest are. So it goes beyond neighborhoods, but neighborhoods are very important in this law. But it's also things like historical communities, tourism areas. Homeowners and renters are very common communities of interest. Socioeconomic income levels are also very common as well. So these are the kind of things that we want to think about when we're giving testimony. So those are communities of interest. Under the Fair Maps Act, these are prohibited from being considered communities of interest. And that includes political party affiliation, incumbency, and political candidates. And that's there to ensure that we avoid incumbent gerrymandering or partisan gerrymandering. And then this next part, it's not banned. It's just pretty much impossible to draw. So if it's a group of people who share similar policy concerns, but they're citywide, that would be impossible to keep them together. And remember, we're trying to keep communities together so they can advocate for themselves and vote collectively. But if they're the entire city, that would be impossible to divide into districts. So when people start to think about providing testimony, these are the three questions that we like to prime people with to get them ready to testify. Does your community share a culture, characteristic, or bond? So what makes them unique from the surrounding area? What brings them together? Is the community geographic in nature? Can it be mapped? So as demographers, we're looking for specifics. So things like street boundaries, landmarks, something that will let us know exactly where your community is so we can map it and make sure that we maintain them as much as possible. And then how would you describe your community's relationship with the city council and the city government? And how is it affected by the policy decisions? So there are going to be a ton of ways for the public to participate in this process. First of all, everything's going to be on the website, including this community of interest form. So the community of interest form is going to ask those questions and then some. So you can let us know about your communities, where you're located, and what makes you a community of interest. And that will be considered a public testimony. It's incredibly helpful for us in this process. And then we are asking for two different types of maps. So the first one is you can draw your community of interest, and I'll show you guys how to do that in a moment. And then, of course, you can draw districted maps as well. So we have a tool called Districter, which I'm happy to show you guys how to use it. It is incredibly helpful for the public to use. This provides accurate census data. It provides citizen voting age population data. And you'll be able to draw maps that are balanced, and you'll be able to see the census blocks as well, which are so important in this process. All of this information will be on the website. So if you need to check the calendar or if you want to look up public testimony, want to look up the Districter link, everything will be on the website. And it will be there for 10 years. Though you do have a redistricting in 2031. But state law says that cities have to maintain their redistricting websites for 10 years. And then let's get into the city. So when we look at the census data, and this is the 2020 census data, the city has a population of just over 11,000 people. You'll notice we have two different data sets here. We have the 2020 census data and we have the citizen voting age population data. Both of these are important when it comes to districting, but they're used for two different reasons. So the 2020 census data is what we use for making sure the districts are relatively equal in population. And then the citizen voting age population is what we use to ensure that we're following the Federal Voting Rights Act. You're going to get both data sets for every map you see, whether it's coming from us or from the public. And that is the end of my presentation. I believe staff has one more slide to show you. And then I'm happy to go over Districter.
Thank you, Liz. Good evening, council. I just wanted to go over our community engagement and outreach plan again. Today, this evening, we're at the second public hearing. Next week, we will have our community meeting at the Healdsburg Community Center. It starts at 6:00 PM. The online tool that Liz is going to go over in a couple of minutes is going to go live tomorrow morning, so we will push that information out. We also plan on attending brunch at the Senior Center to go over this process and bring paper maps to that population who may not be as technologically savvy as others. And then we'll continue our outreach on social media, the city website, the city manager's bi-weekly newsletter. A brochure has been distributed to all the city facilities. And a utility billing insert went out in the December utility bill. And that is it from me.
Are there any questions before I get into Districter?
Councilmember Kelly?
I just had one question about the two different data sets that you talked about for the voting age population versus number of residents in a, when you draw a map. Is, I think you mentioned previously that we're talking about people, not citizens, not voters, when it comes to splitting up the 11,000 residents.
Yeah.
So if we split up, if you have a map that is whatever our 11,000 dot-to-dot population is, and they're equally split amongst the five districts, or the seven districts, or the 15 districts, but the voting age population is distinctly different for one of them than another one? Like, say there's a district that has all of the senior community, which we know are, in which everybody is an eligible voter because they're over 18 years old and there's not a lot of kids in that neighborhood or whatever. Is that, is that going to be problematic for the mapping purposes? So you need to have both, both of them that are consistent across all of the districts? Or it's really just the population, the people?
So first and foremost, we have to look at the census population to use as the balancing way of drawing districts. However, when it comes to the citizen voting age population, that's what we use to determine the voting power of protected classes, which is why it's important and required under the Federal Voting Rights Act. So, and it's also collected a little differently as well. So obviously, the 2020 census, collected in 2020. The citizen voting age population is collected every year. It's an estimation, so it's not as exact. And it will change from year to year.
Councilmember Hagley?
This is actually probably more for staff. I wanted, you talked briefly about the upcoming public meetings. Can you kind of talk about what those are going to look like at the Community Center and the Senior Center? Because I know previous outreach that we did with Measure O, there were like little stations where people could talk versus this kind of formal public hearing where you've got three minutes and then the time. And, you know, it's a, it's a more relaxed setting. So what, what are you envisioning for the community engagement at those? And feedback and just?
I'm happy to talk about that too as well.
Sure, yeah, go ahead. And I might, I might have a comment or two to add, but go ahead, please.
So, yes, you're correct. The whole purpose of it is to encourage the public to come participate in a more relaxed setting where we can have a dialogue. They can ask all of their questions and let us know if they want to submit anything. And it is far more, I guess, inviting for people to come and just speak their minds about the process and get more information. So what's going to happen is I'll go through the presentation, get everybody on the same page, teach them how to use Districter. And if they want to draw maps, they'll have the ability to draw maps there as well. I believe Reina is going to bring some devices for them to draw on if they don't bring their own computer. And I'll be there to teach people how to use Districter and submit their own maps. But the whole idea is to bring people out, let them ask questions, and submit testimony. This process really relies on the public participating. So we're trying to get folks involved as much as possible.
Thank you.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yeah, I noticed that we are probably looking at five census tracts. And one thing I wasn't able to see is how many blocks are in those tracts? Will that be in Districter?
Absolutely. Do you want me to show you?
Yeah, because I, you know, when I'm looking at your PowerPoint presentation, there's a link to Districter, but that link isn't working.
So, and hopefully you'll see it. Okay, so this is your Districter page. It's specifically made for the city of Healdsburg. And if you guys are okay, I'll just go ahead and show you guys how to use Districter.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Great. Okay. So when you all, the, you'll see, this is going to be updated for tomorrow. This is a preview of it. Tomorrow, you'll have the official website. It will be on the city's website. It goes over some of the things I talked about, including the redistricting criteria that we have to use. And then you have two, including you can draw districts or communities of interest. So let me go ahead and go into the districts. So you can draw up to five, but you can draw anywhere from one to five. And if you want to draw more, I can show you how to use that on the other map. But when we look at this, obviously, it's specific to the city. You cannot draw outside the boundaries. And when you zoom in, you can actually see all of the census blocks here. So when we hit that brush tool that allows us to draw, it highlights the, each census block. And you, actually, this is so helpful for the public. Each census block cannot be split. So sometimes if there's a funny shape, it might be because there is a funny census block. So I always encourage the public to go look at the maps on Districter. And any draft map that we make will put on Districter for folks to go and look at and play around with. So when you draw, you just hit the color. They're not numbered. They're just by color. And you populate it. I'm just holding down the mouse and drawing. And it tells you if you want to draw, in this example, a five district one, it gives you the ideal size. So it should be about 2,272 people for each district. Now, we do have a 10% wiggle room, and it does tell you the max deviation. So I'm going to bring that down so we can get a closer deviation. And when we're, and now the deviation here is 2%. When we want to draw another district, we just hit a different color, and then we start drawing. However, I'm just drawing randomly. And you'll see that it populates, and it tells us the deviation as well. So we can delete using the erase button. And again, it takes away that population immediately. Very useful. And then this magnifying glass, it allows you to hover over and take a look at each census block, just to give you an idea of how large it is. Because census blocks really do differ in size. Some of them are zero-populated. Let's see, this has zero population, this little island on the side. But then you have one that's 286, 441. When you deal with census blocks that large, it's going to tip the size of it. So it is handy to know how large a census block is when drawing. So, and then, of course, I encourage the public, when you're done drawing, hit this highlight on assigned units just to make sure you have all of the populations accounted for. Of course, us as demographers, we're going to be looking at all of the maps submitted by the public and let everyone know how well they abide by the Fair Maps Act. And if there are any issues where somebody accidentally doesn't fill in a census block, we'll fill those in for folks, assuming it goes in with the district. So, for example, if some, if somebody drew this blue district and they left this uncolored, we would just color that in for them. And then when people want to save it and submit it, they can hit the save button. And you can hit work in progress and come back to it later. This is very useful. And then you also have the option of sharing it as well. When you hit share now, it goes directly to the gallery. And I'll show you the gallery in a moment. And it's immediately considered public testimony and will download those maps and provide it to city staff and provide any kind of Fair Maps Act assessment as well. I recommend people name it. You can name it whatever you want. If there's a theme in your map, you can name it after that theme. You can name it after yourself. You don't have to name yourself, but sometimes that is useful. And then you would just hit share to the gallery. I'm going to save this as a draft and see if it'll pop up. And then let me show you how to use the community of interest map as well. So this is going to look a little different in the sense that it now has color and we're not going to assess it by population. This is mostly to know where your community is. So if we want to draw- So if we want to draw a community, again, we just go to the brush, and we start drawing. And then we can name it. So let's just say that's the hospital district. And then you would say, describe why this is a community of interest, why it should be maintained. And then, of course, you can put in important places as well. So you would just hit new down here, and then the hospital would be an important place. And you would just name that landmark and why it's important to the community. If you want to draw more communities of interest, you absolutely can. You just hit this plus sign, and then it'll populate more colors. You can draw as many as you want. I highly recommend that you do name them and describe them. And then, if you want to draw six districts, for example, you can use this as well. You would just draw, have six colors out here, and then name them, you know, District One, District Two, District Three, and we can create a map for you that's populated and accurate in terms of the population. You can also go here, the evaluation area, and it does tell you the population for your community that you draw. So you can get a sense of how large that community is, along with the citizen voting age population. So that's Districter. And we'll be going over how to use Districter at the community event as well, and encouraging people to draw maps and submitting them before the next meeting.
Councilmember Harris, or Vice Mayor Harris, sorry.
Thank you. Can you show, once again, how somebody would indicate four districts, five districts, or six districts while they're drawing it?
Yes. So let's go back to the districted map. When you're drawing and you want to have four districts, you're just going to have to do some ideal calculation on your own. So it's just the average of the city divided by four. And then you would draw a map with that, the average of 4% or four seats. So it's going to be more than the ideal size here. It just means you have to do a little bit more math on your own, but you can still submit it. And then, I'm just going to do some, Districter will not prevent anyone from submitting a map if there's only four seats. So you can submit a map like that, and we'll know that you want to have four seats. Or when you save it, you can name, like, four district map. And we'll know that your testimony is saying you want a map to look like that with four districts.
Okay. So do you have more to share with us? Or, sorry, Councilmember Edwards has a question.
Yeah, so on this district level, we are only looking at population and racial population, whereas in, if we were looking at tracts, we would get to know how many residents per household, income, age. So we're only, the public will only be working with racial information and population?
Yes. However, if you want us to get you heat maps that include things like income levels, homeowners, renters, you can give us that direction, and we'll get you maps for next time to review how those communities are maintained in districted maps.
I mean, looking at this, I know how to do it now, because I spent a lot of time looking at tracts, so I could look at how those blocks break down. But I think that if we want to do, for me, I like a lot of detail on that. So I just want to know what we're working with, with the public with, too, right now is what your direction is.
Yeah, so this is a, in terms of allowing the public to draw maps that are functional and based on, and have, most importantly, the number one criteria is balanced population, this allows them to do that. We're happy to create maps for you. So you can see, it's a heat map that shows the populations for any demographic that you would want. So if you do, and what were the examples that you gave earlier?
Well, I was looking at, you know, occupancy, how many residents per house, the average age. I think that, I'm saying this because I've only heard two communities of interest. And I don't know what people need information-wise. I'd like to hear what people need to consider a community of interest. Because we're, we're a pretty broad city, you know, looking at other, certain neighborhoods that are older, but a way for people to come up with those community interests, because the community interests those districts.
Absolutely. And it's partially why we're going out doing community events as well, to get those communities of interest. So obviously, there are a plethora of communities of interest. And like I said, we can get you heat maps as well. Just let us know what you want to see.
Yeah, because the information is there now, it just takes a little bit of work. So, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Hagley?
Just two quick questions. So can you touch on the islands that we're not supposed to have? And then the second one, one of my questions was community of interest, because that's really what I'm looking forward to from our community, is, you know, what are, you had one that, you know, the hospital, there could be, you know, around Rec Park or whatever, how that comes up. So I'm really looking forward to hearing from the public on communities of interest that, you know, campaigning. We've seen a bunch of different unique neighborhoods, but there's a lot that I'm sure that we're not aware of. The one that I had was, and it looks like you colored it in, was the Rivers Bend neighborhood all the way down to Kennedy Lane, they kind of follow the river, and then south of the river. And so my question was, could that be a community of interest because they're tied together with the river, but there's a gap between them? They have commonality of interest? Or does it need to be like immediate next to each other? Does that make sense?
Proximity does matter.
Okay.
Is it, sorry, is it around here?
Yeah, so, I mean, I guess it's two questions. So the community of interest, but Rivers Bend and Kennedy Lane, south of the bridge, that could all be in a district.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Assuming the population would allow that, and it looks like it would. So, yes, anything related to, so, you know, living next to a river, that's actually a very common community of interest, particularly when you think about things like climate change and flooding and things like that, that has real impact from the city council and the policies that they decide. So, yes, absolutely can be a community of interest. And then the islands, thank you for bringing that up. When it comes to these, and I believe they're non-pop, most of them are non-populated. So these would go with the closest district to them. So, for example, this would go with a green district, and this would go with a teal district. So in terms of travel contiguity, if there is a road that you can take, so West Side Road would get you to this island. Looks like there are some little roads down here that would get you to this island connecting to this green district. So I'm not going to be too picky with the public if they don't include those. We'll just populate it for them, because for the most part, they're non-populated.
It's like the corp yard, the airport.
I have a question. On the communities of interest, I'm always, I get, I'm very confused about kind of all of that. But so as we get information from the community about their, what they think are the, you know, what, not think, but what their communities of interest are, would you map, map the, well, not map them, but identify them, and then start drawing a map around that? Because it's, I mean, you know, like people who play pickleball could live all over the city, right? So I don't quite know how that would work.
Yeah, so, as I mentioned earlier, if they are citywide, that would be probably not considered a community of interest. However, we do like to map them. So hopefully, we'll get some members of the public who submit on Districter their communities of interest. If they verbalize their testimony, we'll draw that out so we can physically see it. It's not always possible to keep together communities of interest, because the first priority is population needs to be balanced. However, we are required by law to really minimize those splits of communities and neighborhoods. And at the end of the process, we're required to write a document that talks about the communities of interest, and if there are any splits, why those splits were made. So we have to justify them as well.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councilmember Kelly?
Thanks. It's really great to see the tool to kind of have a better idea of if those are submitting maps digitally, how they'll go about doing it. I think knowing the kind of the issues that folks in the community have raised around, you know, not really having a, not wanting to place a flag in the ground at this stage around the number of districts, but then kind of seeing how this tool operates with, on not just the community of interest map, which you could, you know, make as many districts as you wanted to using that part of the tool, but for the tool that kind of equally easily demonstrates the number of districts and the population associated with it in the one we're looking at now. It seems as though the, if you have it set, which is now, for five districts, anything five or less, say we wanted to have three districts, you could easily do with this tool, but by setting it at five districts, it makes it harder to create, you can't create seven districts on this side of the tool. You'd have to go to the community of interest side, which isn't as obvious on how to create equal populations. Is that right?
That's right, yeah. But it does show the population in the evaluation tab. So you would just look at the population there.
Got it. So if we did want to leave the door open to more than, or the variety of options, so if we wanted to leave the door open to a number of districts, we could create the tool. This is, I guess, why you guys need to know the ballpark of number of districts, so that you can set the tool up to be most useful for the mapping process. Is that right?
Yes, that's one of the reasons.
And then, one of the questions that we talked about in our last meeting was whether or not we have only districted, or if we have an at-large seat for a mayor's seat. And I'm assuming that that just does not, the at-large seat just does not come into play with the mapping, because the district is the whole city for the at-large seat, but it would come into play with respect to the number of districts that someone would create on their map.
Yes, yes. And I encourage the public, if they want an at-large mayor in this process, send us an email or write in a community of interest. So on the other mapping option, you can even just submit, you know, you can draw something and say, I want an at-large mayor. Or it's probably easier to just send an email. So let us know. We do want to know from the public their opinion about at-large or five districts or however many. Thanks.
If I could add a quick thought on that, and it's actually a combo thought and a question. My understanding, and I'm looking for confirmation of this, is that we could not have four districts, we could not have a four-person council. So necessarily, if there are four districts, that would imply a fifth seat for an at-large mayor. I think that's something we can probably help demystify for people in terms of some information. But I did want to clarify that, I think that's accurate, is that you'd need a non-number, and the state code requires certain numbers. So I think we can work on that, but for at least one scenario, if the desire of people is four plus one effectively, drawing four gets that exactly. So we can work on ways that we communicate that better, but that's effectively what it would do.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yeah, I'm curious, because how we keep track of what the preferences are? Because there are people who send email, there are people who are on social media, and there are conversations that we have with constituents. How do we log that so that each group knows? Opinion? Is it only through an email? Or how do we convey that so that the public is aware of all of the information that's coming in?
So we are required to post all public testimony, so all of that is transparent and will be online once we start receiving them. And then we can work with staff and come up with a way that would keep track of that in a way that you guys would find helpful, so we can tailor it to however you guys want us to keep tabs, whether that's, you know, an Excel file or a document. We can work together and try to make it as clear as possible.
Okay, because I know we have a lot of people that, you know, are now doing homework at home, aren't able to make the meetings here. There are only so many of us that can attend the meeting, take the time out. So I don't want to lose the voice of those people who have opinions but don't have the ability or time to participate here in person, but reach out to us individually.
Absolutely.
Okay, is that, do you have more for us?
That's it.
That's it? Okay. Well, if that's okay with the council, I'll open this up, the public hearing up to public comment. If you have a comment, please come to the podium. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and council members. My name is Mitchiko Conklin, and I live at 1355 South Fitch Mountain Road. I am here in the hopes that you will revisit your direction to staff to continue the practice of having a rotating mayor. I feel strongly that a mayor who is elected by the entire city of Healdsburg is the most democratic form of leadership for the city. The mayor, as the leader of the city, should represent all the citizens of Healdsburg and should be voted on by all the citizens, not just from a single district. One person should be accountable and be the actual leader of city government. We need continuity over several years, as most projects take much longer than a mere one year. The logistics of the election process should not determine how the mayor is elected. It's been said that the districts would result in an easier and less expensive process for the candidates, but I do not think that that should be the driving force behind how the mayor is elected. The consideration should be what's best for the citizens of Healdsburg, not the easiest process for the candidates. A council member who's only representing one district also may never be mayor, as the terms are four years, and if there are five council members, that leaves one person out. Therefore, your representative might never be mayor, so you may never have the chance to vote for the mayor. Thank you for your consideration of having an at-large mayor for the city of Healdsburg.
Thank you. Anyone else? No applause, please. It intimidates others.
Hello again. Just one comment before you start. You mentioned earlier that you didn't make a decision last time, and that's confusing, and you could tell by social media and Tribune, everybody thought you did make a decision. And if you go back to when you did the fireworks, same thing happened. There was no formal vote at the end. It was just, that looks like we're doing this. So going forward, you really need to have that formal vote, because you confused the whole town, and this is where it got us. So if you don't mind starting me over?
Just keep going.
Okay. At first, I want to address the issue of a rotating mayor. Although this, as you stated, is a collegial system, it's far from being the most effective. In fact, the next person in line to be mayor is Chris Herrod, and based on the violations stated in John Eisenberg's letter, he should probably either resign or be recalled rather than promote it to the position of mayor. I don't have a real strong opinion on the at-large mayor, but the idea of rotating a person who's just able to sit on that side of the table for three years is ridiculous. I propose, since there's not an election next year, I propose that the council use a blind ballot in determining who the next mayor is. And as far as district elections, you know, there's been several- as far as district elections, you know, there's been several impactful decisions made about the south side of town. There was the Mill District with the hotel and over 200 luxury condos. There was the LNM homeless shelter. There was the train station. And my personal favorite measure was put on the ballot, which would have lifted all annual building restrictions for condos and apartments on 188 acres on the south side of town. Fortunately, that was voted down. The one thing all those decisions have in common is there was nobody on the south side on the council. We would like to see new blood on the council. I'd hate to see the districts done, which it doesn't look like we'd be able to. So somebody that's on the council now somehow is representing the south district because none of you lived there. Not only has the south side been not represented, it's pretty much been ignored. For 10 years, the residents of the south side have complained about the homeless on the sire properties. Finally, after it got so bad, you could see the problem from the freeway, we were able to get $2.7 million to house them all for three years. And it's been a year now since I appeared here to tell you that despite getting $2.7 million, the problem was just getting worse. I suggested that we do a sweep, put up fencing and signage and have patrols so problem wouldn't occur again. That never took place. And now there's still, a year later, there's no fences, no signage, and the homeless are back with all their garbage. So I wasn't surprised that I was ignored, but I was surprised that you folks don't have a problem with this runaway $2.7 million. And hope you do something in the future. Thank you.
Next. Welcome.
Thank you. Valerie White. I live within the Healdsburg School District. I guess this meeting I knew was about communities of interest. So I knew that the senior community is a community of interest, and it's pretty easily, a lot of it is geographically, the three senior communities are right together, but they have an interest in the health of the river, flooding, how the county will manage Memorial Beach, susceptibility to fires, development of the sire property, development of Badger Park, the lack of parking downtown, and the lack of shopping choices that are affordable. And, but now, I really have a question. Is the Latino community a community of interest? And I guess you can't answer because we're in a different format here. But I kind of thought they were. And then I thought tonight I heard, well, that you can't say if you're in the Latino community, you're not a community of interest. To me, this is one of the most important communities we have in town. And I would think that one of their interests now is that they or their friends will be deported. When ICE comes into town, it just starts rounding everybody up. So I would like that clarified, if that community is a community of interest, because I don't, then I don't really understand how the maps can be drawn if they, where they live is just a little minor part of some other district. I really feel, I was thinking and hoping that the Latino community have more, would have more influence. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else? Anyone else? Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Elisa Snetten. I sent an email to every councilmember, and my understanding is that it was forwarded by one of you to the city manager. And this revol, this, we're talking about equity in terms of voting, but we're not talking about how to enable non-citizens who are residents and affected by the policies of the city council, how we can enable them to be able to participate in the elections. A local election does not have the same standard of citizenship. Now, a local election would be the election of a city council, an election of school board members. So I would like you to seriously take this into consideration as we move forward, trying to provide equity to our voters. The other thing that I would like you to consider is regarding the, the population and the census. We know that there is a census date that all people are supposed to report where they are residing. We also know that Healdsburg has a rather large percentage, I've heard 40% mentioned, of second homes. So if the person happens to be a second homeowner and they were in that home on the census date, they would be included in our city population, but they may not be invested in our city. And how do we address this in terms of equity? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. My name's Hank Skewus. I live at 565 Fieldcrest Drive. This is all new to me, this redistricting idea. But my first thought is that the idea of communities of interest is a divisive concept. It's not really, I think, the only way you can really do districts is through population, the number of people. I don't see how anybody could come up with a community of interest map that would really be representative of communities of interest. We're spread all over. There's, you met, somebody mentioned senior citizen communities. Yes, there are three senior citizen communities over in Rivers Bend, but there are a lot of seniors who live in other parts of the city. So how are you going to do that kind of thing, focus on that as a community of interest? It seems to me, just, I'm looking forward to doing this district or thing. It sounds like a fun game, actually. And I'm going to do it by population. I don't see any other way to really do it without confusing things. So, and one more thing, I think the idea of a rotating mayor has served the city well. I don't think we need to change that. I'm tending toward five districts because we need an odd number of district, of councilpeople. So I would say, an at-large mayor obviously has a different electorate, and it's a much larger electorate, which means he or she has to raise a lot more money, which means he or she probably has to look for money from large interests, financial interests, that may have, that have their own agendas. Whereas district councilor, councillors are specifically responsible for the people they serve. And I think that's a superior situation. So thank you for your time. Take care.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Mark McMullin from Parkland Farms. First, I'd like to ask the question, following up on Councilman Kelly's question about the district or and how much it would cost to change it from the five to the seven, so that people could choose from the four to the seven without having to go through the extra added, trying to figure out the other, the other aspect of it. So just to see if there's a financial cost, or if that's because you made the decision last, at the last meeting, that it's only going to be five. And I'm very much in favor of a, of an elected mayor. Looking at the history of Healdsburg, the de facto strong mayors through, though they were elected and reelected only by the councilmembers, that lasted about 100 years. The current rotating system started in 1969, when the city manager form of government was adopted. One-year terms were usurped with two-year terms from 1976 to 1980, when Jerry Edniger and Abe Deluna served two-year terms. But in 1980, it was returned to the rotation of one-year terms. And we know that not every councilmember gets their turn at mayor, which is another reason for, to have an electric mayor chosen by the people. So I think that looking at the history of Healdsburg and the strong mayor in that first 100 years, as well as the fact that the council just decides. You guys could decide tomorrow that we're going to go to two-year terms instead of one-year terms. It's just, all within that, there's no ordinance, there's no nothing. It's all just this collegial nature. And I don't know if in 10 or 20 years, it's going to be quite as collegial as this particular council. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Welcome.
I'm tall, try not to, I'm loud too by nature. Camille Jones from Greens Drive. Actually, we're at Grand Street right now. Welcome. Thank you, all of you. I would like it to be clarified how the, I am in favor of at-large. I see the pluses and minuses, but I think this man is a testimonial of getting elected without having a lot of money spent. I do appreciate that you walked a lot. Not everybody can do that. But I do think there are opportunities for everybody. And it doesn't, I hate to say that it would only be because you had the financing to become mayor. I think Raina probably would agree with that maybe. But I want to have clarification as to how that decision will be made, because I heard the guest consultant speaking, that it would be good for them to hear if we want four. I heard the city manager saying, well, your four implies that. But I'm not sure that everybody else will understand that. And I would want to know, like, are we all talking and talking and talking and saying what we want, and then you guys ultimately still get to decide? And you, it's kind of discouraging because four of you have already indicated that you feel strongly one way. And one of you actually then put it in writing, I appreciate that, why you feel that way. So who, who has the ultimate say-so? Is it, if they get enough feedback from all of the participants saying, we really want an at-large mayor, would that have as much weight as the council ultimately voting? Because that also seems kind of contrary to what you would anticipate is, if you're, you're voting on something that directly affects you. And I would hope that you would listen to the constituents in that situation. And I think that what I perceive happening would be, and somebody had mentioned this before, if you have districts that are underrepresented, which we could possibly have, it's not fair to say that the south isn't represented when they haven't had candidates running, or have possibly. And so how do you, if you have an at-large mayor, then possibly those districts have the chance to vote twice, to vote for their own person if they have somebody regularly, and then also for the at-large position, which might be somebody that is more motivated to look at their interests as, you know, for the whole city and considering everybody's needs. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Jonathan Pearlman on Matheson Street. I think the first speaker said it the best about having an at-large mayor, which I agree with. I think that there's a dilution of our votes, because right now, every election, we vote for all five of the councilmembers. It will come down to, if we have just districts with a rotating mayor, every four years, we'll get to vote for one. So our vote has diluted from voting, you know, every two years for five, down to one every four years. So that's, you know, one piece. I think the other thing is about the representation, that not every councilmember will necessarily become mayor at any one point. So if I'm in a district where my councilmember isn't becoming the mayor ever, that seems to be also a dissolution of our vote. Also, in response to somebody saying something about the cost of an at-large mayor running across the city, but that's what all of you have been doing every single year, every single time you run, is that you're running across the city. So I don't think there's actually any difference to that. It'll actually be less expensive for the districts, you know, when you're running for district, but it won't be more, it shouldn't be more expensive when you're running for, if there was an at-large mayor. So I'm in favor of having the four districts with an at-large mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Don't be shy. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Marilyn Joyce. Good evening. I wrote all of you, but it was late this afternoon. And so I thought maybe I'd share the information that I got from talking to Betsy Wallace Malice from Windsor. And I just want to say, I really enjoy listening to people get up here and speak. I learn a lot, like the research that Mark Mullen did is really interesting. So Betsy was talking about their at-large mayor and how that worked. And I thought it was interesting because it went against the idea that you have to be well-connected and you have to have a lot of money in order to win a mayorship. And in their case, it was Esther Lemus and Rosa, what's her last name? Sorry. Yeah. And Rosa had won when they changed to districts. She didn't put down any, she didn't take any contributions from anyone. She won. And then she ran for mayor. And she ran against Esther. Esther was really well-connected. She overspent Rosa by $30,000. She had all the North Bay endorsements. And yet Rosa, a Latina who was outside the political system, won 60% to 40%. So that's just an example of a at-large mayor that kind of goes against the common conception that you have to be wealthy and well-connected. And in terms of how the mayor's selected, I have also said, I think that the rotating mayor works. I would be open to voting at large because I like the idea of everyone participating, but I don't have strong feelings one way or the other. And I would like to see that community of interest map that allows us to try multiple districts, like six or seven. I would like to see the other map, the population map, also have that available so that we can play around with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have others who'd like to speak? Welcome.
Good evening. Christian Callan Roseland. I had a couple requests. We're talking about a elected mayor or a selected mayor, and the terms, strong mayor and weak mayor have come up. I'd like some discussion of what that means. What is a strong mayor? How does it differ in function from what a weak mayor is? And if, if last week, or the two weeks ago was not a vote, but a sense, then I would hope that the council recognizes that it wasn't binding and come to your senses and open up the map to more districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Not seeing anyone come up to rush up to the podium. I'm going to close this public hearing and bring it back to council for conversation, questions, discussion. Who'd like to start us off? Oh, yes. Sorry. Thank you. We did have a number of questions that maybe we could get clarification on. One was the Latino community being a community of interest. Could you talk about that?
Happy to. Definitely considered a community of interest, a pretty important one, under the California Voting Rights Act. However, just to clarify, we can't draw districts based solely on race. So we can absolutely consider it, but it cannot be the predominant factor when drawing. And that's there to avoid things like racially gerrymandering. So we are paying attention to things like the Calif, or the citizen voting age population when drawing, but it can't be the predominant factor.
Thank you. And then somebody suggested that citizenship wasn't required to vote in this local election. Is this in fact true?
That is not, not correct.
Okay.
In California, to vote, you need to be a citizen regardless of the election.
Okay. Okay. So we'll continue on. We had also this question about second homeowners being a 40% or something of the population. We had also this question about second homeowners being a 40% or something of the population, and could they be, I'm not quite sure where we wanted to go with that, but I guess have a community of interest. No, it was if second homeowners were counted in the census. So how, how do people get counted in the census in the city of Hillsburg is the question, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, April 1st, 2020, it was obviously during COVID, a very unusual year for the census. In terms of how we balance the districts, we have to use that number. However, we can testimony from the public, letting us know what each neighborhood, the general feel is like. Are there a lot of homeowners who are secondary homeowners? So getting a gauge of what that's like, and how the public thinks it should be equally distributed.
Okay. I'll get to you after, can we get through the questions first? Oh, okay.
So if we're looking at, I was surprised to find this, if we take census track 1539.02, there were 1,621 occupied homes and 210 vacant homes. So the census does keep track of occupied versus vacant homes.
Okay, thank you. There was a question about the cost associated with if we changed from five to seven on the mapping, to increase that.
I would have to look into that. I'll get staff and answer this week. We haven't had to do that before, but I'm happy to look into it.
Okay. Strong mayor versus weak mayor, perhaps our city attorney can help?
Yeah, I can answer that. I don't really think there's a government system called weak mayor. I think that probably what Mr. Callen was referring to was strong mayor versus council manager form of government. Hillsburg has a council manager form of government. Most cities do. A council manager form of government is, the city council appoints the city manager, and generally, as Hillsburg does, the city attorney, and some cities, they often, they also appoint the city clerk, but generally, it's the manager and the attorney. Every other employee in the city reports to the city manager, so that's the manager part of that. And also, all council members, including the mayor, have the same level of authority in a strong mayor form of government, which sometimes larger cities will have. I've never actually, it's, to the extent that cities have that, as larger cities, the mayor has more authority in various ways, sometimes has authority to appoint department heads, or has more authority, the mayor has more authority than other council members. Going to districts would not make, transform the city's government into a strong mayor form of government, regardless of whether the mayor was appointed or elected at large.
Thank you. I think that's all that, that's all I had written down. Did I miss any questions? Well, the council, well, okay. I'm not sure. So Ariel, can you, can you say what that question was?
I believe Camille Jones's question was, when the feedback is given from community, and as this process is going, how will the decision about the mayor's seat being at-large or rotating in a district, how will that decision be made? Is it the community, or is it the council, and I think, when in the process?
My understanding is that that decision will be made in our, in our April final mapping decisions, right?
Correct.
And the council will make it. Yeah. Based on the community input and maps.
And I'll say a little bit more about the process, which may be helpful for people as they stay involved. As you heard after this, the second public hearing, the drawing of maps, both by the community and the city through the demographer, begins, so at your next public hearing, the council will hear the feedback and testimony we've received, but also start to get the maps themselves, and provide us feedback on that. We go through a refinement process. There would be two subsequent public hearings after that. And, but given the noticing requirements, we would have to publish public hearing notice for that last meeting in advance. So the hope would be, we'd be pretty close along in that process by the fourth public hearing. So we definitely have some steps to go, which just gives people a little bit of predictability as to how that goes. We'll start, the council would start, and the community would, would get a chance to see all of those maps as part of the published packet for the next public hearing, and provide us feedback at that time. And then we'll have two more hearings after that, so another level of refinement, and then a vote in April.
Councilmember Hagley?
Yeah, I had a, I know the answer to this, but I think it'd be important for the public for some clarification. So when we go to districts, there seems to be this understanding that you represent only the district. Can you clarify and confirm that what we're going to, right now, we have an at-large system where we're elected to sit up here by citywide. We're going to go to districts, and to Dan's point, you know, the feeling is, well, this section of town hasn't been represented, because there's nobody representing me, which is not the case, because we represent all of the city. If there's a district, say where I'm at, Parkland Farms, just to confirm, whoever's elected from these districts represents all of the city, and people still have access to and can communicate and reach out to any of the council members, not just their district, correct? Does that make sense? You're elected by the district, but you represent the city.
Yeah, I'm not sure there's, there's a defined legal answer to that. Having worked in both, you're elected, but you're right, you're elected by the district, and to that issue of representation by geography, one, it's, I was going to say, one hopes is, it's essentially guaranteed that however many districts you have a representative from each one. Having worked in both district and at-large systems, I can certainly agree with you that a good, high-functioning city council is responsive to the needs to the community at-large, while also understanding the specific needs of their district. Those things can absolutely coexist. I think that's the system that we want. I don't worry about that too much in a city of Hillsburg's size. I think it's hard to, if you're not representing the whole city. I think, I think you'll hear about it. But yes, it's not a legal answer, but to me, a high-functioning city council would absolutely be looking out for the entirety of the city, regardless of what district you represent. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, councilmember Hagley?
I also just wanted to kind of underscore that point, especially in a city the size of ours. You know, say, for example, we were in districts right now, and councilmember Hagley is representing his neighborhood, which is publicly known, that he lives in Parkland Farms, that, you know, there are things that come before the council, and you cannot vote on it if you live within 500 feet of that place, or that, you know, issue. So for example, if one of us represented the south side of town in a district, and we live within 500 feet of the L&amp;M motel, we would not be able to vote on whether or not the L&amp;M motel was to become a transitional housing site, because we have a perceived financial interest in that decision. And so I want to just, like, also underscore the caution of, like, if we have fiefdoms, like, you might have to recuse yourself on the biggest thing to impact your district because of that, that issue, with having to recuse on things within 500 feet of your home. So that's just another thing to be considerate of, and I agree that we will all represent the whole city and continue to.
Well, and I think it's important to keep in mind that, you know, we may all live in different districts and different sections of town, but we're all Hillsburg citizens. You know, we drive downtown, I think Valerie made the comment, the seniors and, you know, concerns about parking, and, you know, accessibility, and what they're, they experience in a different section of town. Now you would have somebody from whatever that district is, that can then bring that lens to council. So that's where, as frustrated, frustrated as I was when we got that letter, the more I go into it in districts and understanding it, you know, I'm really looking forward to, you know, the, the community feedback on how the, the maps are going to be drawn up, where, where they draw the communities of interest. And so I'm, you know, looking forward to this process, but I think, you know, it, in a weird way, it's, it is going to make things better. We may not always like it, but, I mean, that's politics, right? Sometimes you serve with people you may not get along with, but you find out a way to do it, you know? So anyway, I don't want to pontificate this public hearing.
Thank you for that. So who wants to kick us off on comments and kind of where, what their thoughts are? I'm looking at Ron.
One of the things I was really looking at in what this exercise in districting was, and why we are talking about it. And it was about the ability for a candidate to run and get elected. Now, on the surface, it may not look like that from this dais, but in reality, a candidate ran a few years ago trying to show about how much it takes to run, that you do have to have funding to run. And we are now saying that, okay, we're going to level the playing field for council members. We're going to shrink the districts down, reduce the costs, yet we're going to keep a ceiling in place for mayor. Because that person running for mayor now will then have to raise the amount of money, and it, it's a substantial amount of money. You know, you can do all the walking and everything, but depending on how many candidates are running, that determines the cost. And it has been a lot of money, and no money spent on, on council campaigns. It's been between $14,000 and $20,000 to run for Hillsburg. Yes, I was able to do it for, two years ago, for a lower amount, but this time cost more, because there were more candidates running in that particular race. So that really leaves it to a person with means, retired, or a certain type of person can run for mayor. And I think that I have not heard, and I was hope, really hoping to hear, how we are leveling the playing field for council, and we're going to keep a level playing field for mayor. That I did not hear. I have not heard back on how that works, and that concerns me in this. When we're talking about the voting, we are all elected, right? I mean, right now, I ran that I'm a senior on a fixed income. So yes, the city was able to vote and determine that, and a district would also have that when you have candidates in a district. I would hope that when a citizen, a resident has a concern, they would be able to write all their council members, just like they do now with, with, with an elected mayor or not. I hope that the residents don't feel that because we go to districts, you are shut off from your council members, your council, the people who represent you. I would hope that if you had an issue that concerned your neighborhood, you would want to, because it takes three votes. So you would want to reach out to more than just one council member. I mean, if you are limiting yourself to your own council member, you really are limiting your ability to get things done in a city. So these are all very important things that I think need to come out. There is a lot of information available, and it is going to take time, and it's a short timeframe. It took me, I spent hours this weekend going through and looking at the, the census tracks to learn how many vacant homes there are, how many occupied homes there are, how many people under 18, how many people over 65. These are all, sometimes it's important that we have to step up and spend time to do these things to get a real detailed results. So I hope that going forward, you understand that I am taking that time, I know my fellow council members are taking the time, and at times, it may seem that when you were talking in a, to your friends, or talking to your next-door neighbor, that you may feel that everybody feels that way. I was looking at the conversations, and I think that when I looked at the letters I got, I got 10 emails for a at-large mayor, I had 11 correspondence for people who wanted to have it rotating. So it's important, I think that it's nice that we have the letters out there now, but to understand that for, as strong as we all feel about an issue, other people may have different opinions about it. And we did hear a variety of opinions tonight, but again, not really addressing the issue of how we achieve the exercise of parity for protected classes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, you want to go?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions that I didn't get a chance to ask, and then I'll have a few words. But I assume sometime later in the process, we'll also have a discussion about how long the term for the mayor's going to be. Is it going to be the same as the other council members? Or can it be a shorter term? Is it two or four years? So I haven't heard that question addressed yet. And maybe just put that out there now. Is that something we're going to decide as part of this process, and voted, vote on it on April 7th? Or is it, is it, does it have to stay four years like, like the rest of us?
Yeah, my, my initial take on that is, is it depends on how the council wants to handle the, I think if the council were to create a position of an at-large elected mayor, it's appropriate to, in the course of doing so, determine the term. And I know we've seen two years.
It is up in the air.
If the council were not to, to continue to have a mayor selected from amongst the council, I don't think there's any requirement or necessity at that time to change the rules for selection of the mayor. You may wish to take that on as well, but I don't think that's necessary for the process that we're dealing with right now, which is creating districts. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. So, I guess one other question is, I had about the software. It's defaulted to five districts. Is that a result of the direction that we gave at the last meeting, or is that just the way the software comes scanned?
No, that was a result of the direction from the last meeting, but we can't, it would just take some time.
Okay. And it's the, the related question is, if we continue down the path for at least a while, where we have people making maps for four or five districts, for example, or maybe six districts, I know a couple of people said they have a preference for that, at what point does that become impossible, or, or, you know, or more than just problematic to have these things running concurrently?
So it's, all of these decisions on which maps you want to keep, which maps you want to eliminate, will be up to you all. So you're the final decision-makers. We'll be providing you maps with five districts next time. However, we're also going to be showing you maps from the public, and I'm assuming it'll be anywhere between four and six districts for each map. And every one of them will be assessed based on those, however many seats they have. So we'll make sure the deviations are appropriate for, you know, four, five, six districts, and we'll evaluate them accordingly. Ultimately, it will mean more work, more assessment, and you will need to eventually make that decision on how many seats you want.
Okay, thank you. I, I feel like the direction we gave at the last meeting was, was good, and there are good reasons for it, and I can go into that a little bit, but it's clear that there's plenty of people in the community that want to see other options. Right now, we're kind of given a hack on how to go to, to do four districts or six districts. And at the very least, people need to have some very clear directions on how to do that, to see that as an equal option. You know, if, if it's not, you know, super clear to, you know, that's, if there's, if there's reason to believe that that's the direction we might go in. And so out of fairness to those folks, I think we have to, we have to address that. But, but, you know, as, as I said in part at the last meeting, and, and in communication with other folks since then, I think that the, the five district rotating mayor is, is a good path to go on, and, and it mostly is my concerns about the mayor's seat. And it's tied closely with the whole impetus for doing this, which is greater voting equity. And so really, the sense that we have one seat amongst the five that has a special prestige, a special recognition for being voted for the whole city, even though they only have one vote, there definitely is a new hierarchy when you have a mayor of that type. They've got, you know, a certain ability to say, you know, well, I was voted for by everybody, and you were voted for, folks that live in Parkland Farms, for example, or whatever. And so, so that's, that's really concerning. Another concern I have is, you know, it's, the whole districting process is going to really stress our ability to recruit candidates, which has always been a challenge, and probably in many cities, but it has been in Hillsburg. And now I think it's even, even more stressed, because, you know, not only do you have to have qualification of somebody willing to run, and, and councilmember Edwards outlined a lot of the issues at play in terms of who really has the ability to run as, you know, as far as fitting that into their life, in terms of how much the money they make, and how much time they have, and so on. So, so now there's the added requirement that you have to be in a certain area. So that just makes it more challenging. What is, makes it less challenging is that the district elections are, are less expensive and easier to run, because it's a smaller area. So that's a big forward step in terms of equity, but it doesn't apply to the, an at-large mayor's seat. And I really think that distinction is, is a very bold one, and is, is, is worris- And I really think that distinction is a very bold one and is worrisome. And in cases where we don't have all the candidates that we want, or no candidates at all, or just, you know, there's this potential that you have somebody who just walks in. And so if there's only one candidate, and that person's basically self-elected because nobody else was able to run, for whatever reasons are, good reasons and bad, then they'll come to the council. If we have a rotating mayor, and that person happens to be a real extremist or an outsider or some, you know, other negative whatever, that council's not going to appoint that person to be the city spokesperson, the mayor, run the meetings, if they aren't really capable of doing that. You have that final check before somebody who walked in becomes the city's mayor. But if we have an at-large mayor, the situation is the same. So we can hope that we have two or three candidates every time. If we have one, then that one person comes in for two to four years, or whatever we decide for the length of the mayor term, and we're stuck with that person. And I don't really know what the recourse is for the council if we have somebody who's not really able to do what a mayor ought to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kelly.
I'm reflecting back on kind of the reaction I had at the prior conversation about this item, and I don't, you know, I don't think it's private that I was the, you know, lone four-one on the direction that was given to stick with the status quo. And I think the reason why I felt uncomfortable moving forward with the quote-unquote "status quo" is because I disagree with the premise that when we move to district elections and we maintain a rotating mayor, that that maintains the status quo. And the reason why is because the existing status quo and what has existed since, I don't know, a long time, probably since the founding of our city, is that all the council members were elected at-large by all the voters of Healdsburg. We all were elected at-large by all the voters of Healdsburg. Now, don't get me wrong, I'm sure there's plenty of people who didn't vote for me or voted for you, right? I'm not saying every voter voted for us, right? But that every voter had the chance to pick their council members, and every resident who votes in Healdsburg had a chance to see our names on the ballot and choose. And so each one of us, who was in the rotation to potentially become mayor, was elected at-large by all of the residents. And that, to me, is the status quo of at-large voting that has yielded the selection of mayor on a rotating basis. So I put myself in the scenario and not thinking about, you know, and I think there's great reasons, pro and con, to this. Like, I think there is, you could write a long list on both. But when I think about, you know, if we have five districts, if we maintained the five districts, five seats, and a rotating mayor, and you had five districts, and you had, you know, say, two people running against each other in a race, which is not unusual, that you'd have, you know, two, Mrs. Smith versus Mr. Banks, and they, Mrs. Smith barely wins, or, you know, it's a close race, which is kind of what you want to see, that there's people engaging, and there's two good candidates, and one candidate prevails. If you have five districts, and you have two candidates in that one-fifth of the city, one-tenth of the city voted for Mrs. Banks, and she won. So one-tenth of the voters elected this person. And now, one-tenth of the voters will have that person they selected potentially to become mayor if that person rotates into the mayor's seat, which is very different than 100% of the city having the opportunity to vote for that candidate on an at-large basis, as it is now for the council. I'm not sure if that mathing is making sense, but what I'm trying to say is that you may end up with council members who get elected on a district basis, who really have only been elected by, you know, a very small cross-section of the voting population. And so I think that the recourse, you know, to Councilmember Harret's point, sorry, Vice Mayor Harret's point, about the recourse, what do you do if you get stuck with a person in the mayor's seat, or a council member who, you know, somehow pulls the wool over our eyes and then shows up on the dais and is not who you thought they were? The only, as we saw, you know, in our neighboring city, under some really terrible circumstances, the only avenue is resignation or recall. And so I think, obviously, you never want to be in that situation, but I do think that the idea that the entire city, if there's an at-large mayor, would have the wool pulled over their eyes, and we end up with this mayor who's elected, who's really not the figurehead we want representing our city, I think that's less likely than in a, you know, contentious head-to-head, or say, there's even three or four people running in District Four. And then if there's three or four people running in District Four, you have less than one-tenth of the city electing the winner of that, you know, small district race amongst four people. I mean, I think these are unusual circumstances, but I think I'd like to game out the particulars of it. I do think also, from the cost perspective, you know, we think about it because we've all had to go through it, and it's painful, and there's some good things about campaigning, and then there's a lot of not-so-great things about campaigning, you know, personally. But I think there are plenty of times when we've seen in other cities, the district races get expensive, because there are clear intentions of, you know, well-interested people, or whatever, who really are trying to oust their sitting council member. And so they fund, you know, they fund the opposition. And so I don't think it's necessarily true, as, you know, across the board, that the district elections are going to be less expensive than what it costs to run at-large. And I'm trying, I don't think that that should really be a consideration of, you know, what we should be evaluating when it comes to the decision for an at-large seat. As evidenced by Marilyn Joyce's comments, Rosa Reynosa raised zero dollars and still won, you know, ran and won mayor against a very well-funded candidate. And then she ran for reelection again, this go-around, and no one ran against her, and she raised no money and was reelected for Windsor Mayor. So I don't think that the funding piece is necessarily one that, you know, it's not always going to be cheaper to run in a district, because they, you know, there might be a really expensive head-to-head and/or, you know, four-way race. And I think the flip side for mayor, there may be a situation where someone's doing a great job, or there's a candidate who people are really excited about, and no one's going to run against them, and it wouldn't be expensive. Or someone's really well-financed, and they don't win because there's somebody else who's kind of the underdog that the community wants to elect. So all that to be said, I just, I don't think that that's, to me, the thing I'm weighing. It's more the idea that every voter in Healdsburg during an even year would have a chance to vote. If we don't have, if we only do a five-year, or sorry, a five-seat or a seven-seat, whatever it is, districting, and we rotate mayor, half the city, you know, give or take, is not going to have a chance to vote. They're only going to vote once every four years for city council, which is very different than the status quo that exists now, which is every two years, all the voters of Healdsburg get to vote for either two or three city council members. And that status quo would change if we go to just districting and just rotating. So I think it's been very educational. I think tonight, we heard great public comment. The first meeting, we heard great public comment. We've had, you know, a lot of folks weigh in on this, which is why I felt like I wasn't really ready to make a decision on the quantity of districts or the at-large versus rotating mayor, because I think there's a lot we, you know, we have to learn in this process, and how we approach it as people who have run and won is very different than how residents who never want to run or never would think about running, you know, would approach it. And also, there's a number of people who have said in the past, and people I would love to see step into public office, "I don't want to run because that part of it feels uncomfortable to me, but I would love to serve." So I do think that by having districts and kind of that lower barrier, we will see more people step forward and want to run for council, because they will see it as, oh, there's only a thousand homes in my district, and only 600 voters, I could probably go talk to 600 people, that doesn't seem as scary to me, I'm going to run. And so I do think it may surprise us that more people would step forward than on the at-large basis that has somewhat chilled people's interest in participating in the past. So all that to be said, I still, I remain open to the number of districts. I think the way the tool is set up is unfortunate, that it can't be like a little more flexible in terms of the quantity of districts and the way that the population will equate. So I would love to see us continue to allow for the input from the community on the quantity of districts. And I'm, I also think about when I was on the planning, or Parks and Rec Commission, we had seven members, and being able to talk to two other members without violating the Brown Act and getting feedback and having a more collegial environment. Having seven people on the dais, I think it would be, you know, a huge change for up here, but I think you could end up with better policymaking. We have a lot of commissions with seven members. I think all of our commissions have seven members, except for the senior commission, that's five, I think? Seven? We all have seven, except for the council. And then I remember when I went from Parks and Rec Commission with seven to the Planning Commission at the county with five, and that felt very different, because you can only talk to one other person. And so I do think it would be interesting to have seven people on the dais. I know I'm not trying to filibuster, but I'm just sharing, you know, the thought process behind it. And I know we've had a great status quo of five members, but I still remain open to more council members, six districts and an at-large mayor. I think it would be an interesting opportunity to change the status quo, especially given that the status quo yielded this lawsuit, that now we are headed into a complete overhaul of how elections work in Healdsburg.
Councilmember Hagley.
I appreciate your thoughts and my other council members as well. You know, a couple of things, when I look at this, like I said earlier, when we first got served the lawsuit, and, you know, when the other cities were getting them, you know, there's this kind of resistance, like, oh, but we're a small city, that, you know, why should we have to go to districts? We're too small. And I think we've all thought that, and I've heard, you know, when this initially came before us, and we had to make that decision, like, all right, we're going to go to districts. There's frustration from people that gave a number of different examples. And the more I look into it, and the more I research, and just, you know, the presentation last time and today, I've got great demographers and a lot, you know, learning a lot in this entire process. You know, I think when you're talking about what we're doing here, at the end of the day, it's about equity and opportunity. You know, if you look historically, I know, like, when I ran the first time, I'm not sure, I mean, Mark, if you're researching for Parkland Farms, it might have been Lisa Schaffner maybe lived up there when she had kids, but that was kind of my motivation to run, is I had really young kids. And at the time, there was, I heard all the time, well, there's no kids left in Healdsburg. It's like, well, I mean, you're not going where I am. There's kids everywhere. And now we have three council members with kids in our local schools, and that wasn't the case when I got on council back in 2016. The other issue was, living in Parkland Farms, I remember there was a community meeting that was held at the community center, and people were complaining because it was so far out of town to have a meeting there. And there was almost this perception that, you know, Healdsburg is downtown, it's like this core, oh, you're way up there, that's, you know, I kind of joke around that people think I live in South Cloverdale, and that's not, it's not the case. Yeah, we're a four-and-a-half-square-mile city. And so, you know, as I go back, there's a couple of things that I think about in this process. And I'm trying to come to this with an open mind, and obviously, I have opinions, but I, you know, like with anything, I try to question why I feel a certain way, and I try to open myself up to other feedback to go, okay, well, that makes sense. I kind of have notes I'm all over, so I lose my train of thought, sorry. So a couple of points is the perspective piece. I think it is important, when we're talking about districts, what I like about, you know, the five districts, or seven, or whatever we come up with, without the rotating, with the rotating mayor, without the at-large mayor, is we now have these perspectives. They're kind of forced perspectives that we haven't had historically. And again, Mark, you can do the research, but, you know, we don't, none of us are neighbors, like, next door to each other, but, you know, there, I don't know how long it's been since somebody's, you know, been on council from Rivers Bend, or Kennedy Lane area, or some of these others, where you may not have that representation that is sitting up here, that, you know, we all operate in our circles and go different routes around town, so our perspective is pretty narrow throughout, you know, our normal, everyday lives as residents of Healdsburg. When you run for office, that changes, because now you're going into, you know, outside of your normal route of taking the kids to school or whatever, now I'm over in this neighborhood and this, and you're seeing and smelling and hearing and feeling what that person is experiencing. And those, and all of those experiences I've said before, stick with me. So that's an at-large. Now we're looking at districts. So now we have a smaller area, and for people that are employed, to your point about, you know, people that have the means to be able to run or retire and can, you know, knock on way more doors than I was able to, you know, I think it does open up opportunities when you have a smaller area, and you have this campaign season that now you can focus on that area. And I do think it would make it more welcoming for people to run when they know that they can actually go and knock on, like, the entire district, like, you know, talk to everybody, have, you know, meetings. So I think that's important, because then the person is represented up here. Now, again, like I said, we don't all live right next to each other, but, you know, there's pockets of town that we look up here, and it's like, we don't live there. You know, we represent it, and we care about it just as much as any other community. But, you know, so that's where I, I like the idea, and I'm really embracing the idea of what we're really tasked with doing is coming up with districts. I don't believe that this moment is the time to try to reinvent and rethink our entire form of government, especially when we have a redistricting that we're going to have to do in 2030, when the new census comes out. So we're looking at really, what, two election cycles, or three, right? By then, maybe four? So that gives us time, with what we have now, with a system that's working, and that we can, you know, have that discussion where, all right, looking maybe toward the next time, do we want to do this? Does the mayor have more power or not? We can have these really in-depth discussions. I think right now, with the timeframe that we have, and, you know, the number of meetings that we have to shoehorn into this process, I'd much rather focus on the communities of interest, really diving into the data and the maps, and seeing what the community comes up with, and on where the lines are drawn. I'm really, I'll do my own, obviously, but I'm really not looking at mine. I'm really looking at where the community maps come in and where those lines are, because I'm curious, you know, how different people would see how these districts should be represented. The other thing that I just wanted to mention is, and I'm really kind of talking about myself here, too, where, you know, I know that, you know, in politics, sometimes you don't know somebody, and you make judgments or whatever. And there might be, like, you have opinions about another council member, you know, oh, this district, this, or we heard some comments about, well, what if somebody that was, had these opinions, and, well, we wouldn't make the mayor, you know, what do we do if, you know, somebody like this? Well, and there's a lot of hypotheticals that we're talking about. And in my mind, when we go to districts, and if somebody's elected from that district, whether it's five people run, and that person wins, so it's like a very few number of people voted to put that person in one of these seats, we respect that vote. That's why we are here, is we respect the vote. I may think they threw away their vote or whatever, like, I may have a personal opinion about that, but I need to get over that, because I need to respect that vote. To me, that's really important, that I can't sit here and try to do this to, you know, protect the status quo. I think what we're trying to do is improve the form that we have here with, you know, for right now, it's the five council members, to me, the five districts. And I would welcome the opportunity when, you know, whatever the community comes up with the districts, that, you know, who is it that could be somebody new that can, you know, provide another perspective? You know, just like back in 2016, when I ran, it was, I brought, you know, somebody with really young kids, that, I said this before, a utility pole in the middle of the sidewalk, and those things, like, you know, riding bikes with the kids, like, there's a perspective that was brought, and I think with each of us on council, we all have very different backgrounds. But it's great to have us all looking at the same agenda item, but through different lenses. And to me, that's what this council and this setup, why it works. So again, I want to be clear, I have not made up my mind on this. I, we have many more public hearing, public meetings, and a couple more public hearings. I'm really looking forward to the maps, whether it's seven, six, five, four, however many districts people draw up, and trying to understand why that's important. But at the end of the day, I feel like we all need to focus on the equity piece. This is about making these seats accessible and more equitable for people to get and to, I don't know, win or get a seat or whatever it is. And so I think there's a lot of opportunities, there's a lot to be excited about that. The one thing that I am not going to like- The one thing that I am not going to like, I've, I've always had a saying that in Hillsburg, you don't run against somebody, you run with them, you know? I mean, that's been great because on my election cycle, it's always been three, I've run with everybody from Tim Myken to Gary Ploss and Mel Amato, I mean, a whole bunch of people that I've become friends with over the years and, and some who have passed since. But going to a district election, when you only have one person that comes out of that or mayor, now we're looking at some pretty, there's the potential, I think you touched on it, could be some toxic races, and that, you know, bumps me out because it's, I really liked how we're able to kind of all run. And so, anyway, that's all I'm going to say. So I, the, well, final thing is, do the maps, think about the communities of interest. That's really a big one for me. You know, the example that you did with the hospital or Rec Park or, you know, if it's a certain park or downtown, like, what are the impacts that the, when, what was his name? The demographer that was here last week, Paul Mitchell, when Paul was here, he mentioned the 49ers stadium and thinking in terms of like, okay, well, the neighborhood's next door to the stadium, what, what are the impacts or if you live next to a particularly active park? In my mind, it's, you know, I'm assuming the communities of interest could be fairly small, like in Parkland Farms, there's some homes that are right by the entrance to the, the Ridge Trail, and they might experience parking issues, or they have some affordable housing that's being developed. So that, I encourage the public to think about where they live and their community area and maybe, you know, things to consider as we're looking, you know, these, these big areas to say, okay, well, here's one, let's make sure that it's not split, even though it might be tiny. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll weigh in as well. I made it no bones about the fact that I didn't want to go to district elections and I felt like we were being extorted and all of those things. So kind of come around to this. I'm trying to embrace it more, and I do feel like we will have more representation. This provides, I think you, Councilmember Hagley, said a number of times, opportunities. I think this does provide an opportunity for us to maybe see some areas that we didn't see before with districts. People are a little more familiar with, with their districts and, and can bring those things to light. I've heard a lot about people talking about status quo, and this is not status quo. I mean, this is exactly the opposite of that, as far as I can see, that just because we're suggesting five districts and a rotating mayor, which we've done before, doesn't mean that it's the status quo. Now we're talking about districts, we're talking about, you know, sort of turning the elections on their, on their ear. People who are concerned about not being able to vote, but every four years, I think that's just a lack of comfort, it's not liking change. I don't think your vote's being taken away from you. I don't think it's diluting your vote. In fact, I think a district person will, will, will give you more, more say, you know, kind of a big fish, little pond kind of a situation. So, yeah, I, I really think that, I, I am also looking forward to trying to really grasp the communities of interest and see how that works. I have spent hours in the last several days looking at all the other cities that went through district elections and watching all of their public hearings and trying to understand what their issues were and how they would relate to our city and what we can do. And I think there's just a tremendous amount of confusion about it, and nobody likes change, right? So we don't know what it's going to be like. I think the bottom line is, we really don't know. We could come up with a million scenarios, and maybe they'll happen and maybe they won't, but I think we have to trust the process and we have to focus on why we're doing this, which is equity and, and, and trying to get equity for a protected class under the CVRA. So that's the whole point of this. So I think we need to protect, we need to, to appreciate that, that's why we're doing it, and then be all in. And the idea of an elected mayor, to me, really just flies in the face of that, because some people are saying, well, you know, if you're only a four-year cycle, not every district council member will get to be mayor. But under an elected mayor, none of the district elected people are going to get to be mayor. So I think that's even more exclusive. And, and so the odds are, someone runs, the probably, and if they're successful and like what they're doing, they're going to run again, they'll get to be mayor. And I think it's an important step and to give all of, if we get people in here who, you know, are underrepresented, then they get to also be the mayor of the city Hillsburg. I think, I think that's where we're trying to go. So, anyway, I haven't heard any arguments yet to say yes to an elected mayor, but I'm, as my fellow council members have all said, willing to continue listening. We've got, this is just the beginning of this listening session, so I look forward to the continuation and seeing maps, kind of seeing the reality of what this looks like, I think is, is going to be really interesting, and hopefully we can, we can figure that out once we get there. Does anybody else have, Ron?
You know, listening to this, I think that we are one of the smallest cities so far to go to districting, and we are unique. I can't remember what the context was, but somebody was saying that Hillsburg name has value. And I'm a little cynical that when you look at Sonoma County, we're pretty prestigious as a city. And by us being elected by districts, rotating, nobody, how do I say this? It keeps it more honest on why people are running. And I can see it would be pretty easy to enjoy the title of being Hillsburg mayor, whereas right now we're equals, but again, there is that possibility, and keeping it equitable, I think, is really important. And as, as Councilmember Hagley said, it's important for us to get the districts done now. I mean, this is not a forever decision. I mean, if we look at the next time when the census is out, the residents say, wow, this did not work, it's not representing us well, it can, it can be changed. Whatever decision we make, it's not a permanent. Each, each council will be able to revisit things if the citizens are requesting it. In fact, it would be pretty easy if you had candidates that were running for change in districts, you could get that change happening a little easier than having to run citywide. So I think that the combination of let's get these districts in now, see how things work out, it's not permanent.
Thank you. Councilmember Kelly.
Yes, please.
I wanted to just ask staff, and, you know, I think there was a comment that City Manager Kay made previous in this process where it said, you know, because we're going to districting, and this isn't redistricting, which is when you kind of fix the lines based on a population change in a future census, that the districts could very well look like this, however this process comes out in April for 50-plus years. I'm curious, can you think of a mechanism, say, we make the decision to stick with five districts, five council members, a rotating mayor, at the end of this process in April, could, what would be the mechanism for a decision to revisit that and to have, per Councilmember Edwards' thought, that we could change it in the future? I don't foresee a scenario in which that kind of comes up. It would, it wouldn't, it would have to be what you, the council could just put it on the agenda, we want to switch to an at-large mayor system, and a majority of the council could decide, and then it's done? Or is that even a mechanism that could be, could happen in the future?
Yeah, it's not something we've researched at this time. My thinking at this point is, i- if the council, a logical time to do that, if the council at that time wanted to do, would be concurrent with redistricting, because you're already, you're right, I did say they, in all likelihood, they will look similar, and I'll stand by that, having done redistricting elsewhere. If all you're doing is fine tuning districts for a little bit of population gain here and there, they often do look quite similar. With that said, if the council at that time wanted to make a structural change, I believe that's entirely on the table. I don't think you are beholden to that cycle. I'm not aware of something that would keep the council from making that change off-cycle on redistricting. I'm looking to see if anybody knows what that would be. In all honesty, we haven't researched that, so it's something, if, if the council, you know, either next month or in 10 years wanted to look into it, something we'd have to do some research on.
Okay, great, I think that's helpful.
Vice Mayor?
Related to that, I think it's, it is important to know that, that this isn't set in stone, and so maybe at some point, it would, six years is a short amount of time, really, in the long, in the greater scheme of things in terms of how the government is set up, and so that, that would be the most, most logical time. It could come sooner, and we could, at some point, have had an aha moment that, boy, we really need an at-large mayor, that's really going to solve our problems. A lot of people have said, well, we need a, a strong mayor, we need some kind of citywide oversight of the district people, and, and, and none of those, you know, none of those needs have ever really been, you know, part of our conversation for decades. No one's really actually, as far as I know, I'm sure that's been maybe one or two people somewhere, Eric has said, well, we really need to have this at-large mayor here in Hillsburg, but it's never really come up, as far as I know, it's not been a burning concern in this community. And of course, now that we have an option, we're looking at it, and that's good, but, but I, you know, I think it's a, it's a case of trying to fix a problem that isn't there. And so, obviously, at this point, having gone through this process, we may be looking at it differently, and that's okay, so maybe there will be a change in the future. But, you know, in the meantime, I really appreciate your comments, Councilmember Edwards, in terms of how an at-large mayor really kind of shifts the culture of, of the city council in terms of how we see each other, what our roles are, how, how we interact. And I think that's, you know, that by and large, that having an at-large mayor is going to really complicate that in a way that I think could have some really negative impacts.
Thank you. Councilmember Hagley had a question, and then Councilmember Kelly?
I just, kind of moving away from the, the mayor conversation, I just wanted to share that I had a great conversation with Mayor Rodosa in Windsor this morning, met her for coffee to kind of get her take, because she went through this as a citizen prior to running for council, and, you know, I asked her, like, what were some of the things that, that you were surprised about? And, you know, one of the things she mentioned, and I think this is important, as we're looking at really what we're here for, is the equity piece. She says, I was really surprised that our Latino community was not concentrated in one area, they're pretty spread out. So this is where I'm really looking forward to, you know, seeing the community feedback, because I think when, it wasn't just the numbers, you could also see what the, the breakdown, and you could try to get even, so there's even representation and, and things like that for, you know, renters, owners, seniors, so you could get creative on how you wanted to do it without trying to put everybody in one district, right? So I think that's what I'd like to really encourage the, the community as you're playing around with the maps and you're looking at these different things. How would you draw the most equitable map based, and don't just look at the total number, but kind of like break down, you know, what does that look like? And I, I think we'll, we'll be surprised, I mean, we had, when this first happened, there, you know, we had a couple of comments that kind of made me cringe a little bit, where they're like, kind of implying like, everybody from a certain demographic lived in one neighborhood, and it's like, you know, it's not the case. So I just wanted to say that, like, as we're going through this, this next, I think, which is the more exciting process, is drawing, each of us drawing our maps and the community drawing maps and submitting and communities of interest, that's really where I'm excited to see the feedback.
Councilmember Kelly?
I just wanted to confirm with our consulting team, so I think one of the questions and the dialogue with Councilmember Edwards was regarding what information would be available in the, the tool and if we needed to make a request about the inclusion of certain demographic data. So for example, renter versus homeowner data, racial identity, age, that those wouldn't automatically appear in the tool unless we request it? Is that accurate?
No, so all, so where, we don't create the tool, this comes from Districter. They provide essentially the important data needed to draw balanced maps. So that includes the census data, that includes the CVAP data, but it gets clunkier the more data they include, so they don't include the extra ones like age or homeowners. However, we can provide that to you guys. So I'm happy to put together maps that include things like age range, income levels, homeowners, housing vacancies, things like that. So you'll have access to those kind of visualizations when you're looking at draft maps.
Can it also include race?
You already have access to that, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think for, for me, I don't know if we need it in the, it sounds like if the tool gets clunkier when you add those things, but I think it would be helpful when we get closer to a more final map phase. I think it would be, it'd just be an interesting data point to have some of those things included if, if.
No, I, I agree, I feel like I've heard, you know, the renters and seniors, and there's a couple that, you know, and maybe that's something that, at the next community hearing that you could include to maybe have people think about and say, oh, yeah, this one too.
And I just wanted to add, I was looking at, when we were having this dialogue and just talking about the, the scenarios, so everybody on this dais, and I'm looking at historic vote counts, I mean, the average vote count for an at-large, I'd say there's like 2,700 votes, 2,800 votes, 3,000 votes, 4,000 votes for each at-large candidate who's been elected over the last, since, for the last 20 years. 3,000 votes is like around the threshold. So if we had a four-way race in a district, someone could win with 400 votes. So it's a really different voter threshold. 401 people could elect a candidate versus right now, which is 3,000, or just, you know, around 3,000, which is just an interesting data point to think about. It definitely lowers the threshold needed to win, 400-ish people, voters, but at the same time, wild to think about, that you could have a mayor in a city of 11,000 people who has, who 401 people-ish voted for, and they're now representing the entire city as the official spokesperson and leader of your city. So I could see that going both directions, and to me, that is worrisome. So I think that's kind of another thing to think about of underscoring, to me, why I think we should have a at-large mayor.
I saw an interesting article in the Press Democrat about Cotati has their first Hispanic vice mayor. Santa Rosa had their first African-American mayor a few election cycles ago, and all these first outside of Windsor have taken place in a rotating system.
Thank you. Okay, so are we talked out at this point?
One thing I want to just add and ask, I think, as we discussed, the, the way that the tool works and the way that the vote, the population count shifts, that it's, you can go lower than a number very easily, as demonstrated by having five different colors, but you could have four districts you carve out, but it would be impossible to create six districts without switching to the other functionality of the communities of interest side of mapping. So I'm curious if we want to give direction about keeping it with five being the maximum number of districts, or if we want to have seven on the tool, so that at least people could map using the population count for potentially six or seven districts, and then it would be able to, you can always go smaller, but you can't go larger.
So you can get elected with 200 votes.
I'm not saying that that would be the solution, I'm saying that that would be a way for people to utilize the tool in a way that you could get easier data, yes. And we have had many people in the community ask for six districts, so.
My question would be, what, what's the, so you could do more districts with the communities of interest, would the result be similar to, I mean, what's, what would be missing from that if, if that was the way someone wanted to go?
If they drew using the community of interest version, they won't have the math done for them in terms of the deviation, they're not going to have the ideal line there for them, they'll have to know what number to shoot for. So if it's, if they're going to draw seven districts, then they have to take the average of the city population with seven seats and just try to get as close as possible. of the city population with seven seats, um, and just try to get as close as possible to that. The more districts there are, the harder it's going to get to get to that, uh, deviation. Um, so just keep that in mind. Uh, and then when they do submit it, we'll run the numbers, um, it'll look like any other map, um, and we'll assess it for how well it fulfills the Fair Maps Act requirements.
Thank you. Ron?
What is that starting number so people can get their calculators ready for the population that they will be dividing?
So it's the 2020 census population, which I think was 11,372 or something like that. Um, and then just divide that by seven or however many seats, um, you want to draw.
So 11,372 would be the starting point when you're using the community map, communities of interest map?
Yeah, that's the total number and then divide it by however many seats.
Okay.
As opposed to just deciding to have the tool have seven districts and then the tool does the work for you if we wanted to do that.
So, so do, do you all want to weigh on, weigh in on that thought?
How, how, what is the timeframe if we go from five to seven to six for you to adjust the tool? How much?
We can put in the request ASAP and get a sense of how long it could take them. It might be really fast, um, but it really depends on their workload. Um, I can't guarantee a time. Um, I also want to, um, put this out there that if we do say, you know, go to seven, um, then anyone who wants to draw six, five, four, um, they also have to come up with that average number as well. So it's not going to be the same ideal number on the, um, mapping tool. Because the map, mapping tool thinks that it's seven, so they're going to assume you're drawing seven districts.
So again, this is why we make, each meeting is very important, decisions need to be made to keep us on track so that we end in April.
Uh huh.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, you want to weigh in on this one? No. Um, yeah, I, I think we gave pretty clear direction about the five and that's what you used and I, there's an opportunity for the community map side. So for me, I would, I would say stay where we are and keep moving forward and start getting the communities of interest and so on all defined. Vice Mayor?
I agree with that. I, I just think the instructions need to be really clear and upfront and we could put the, you know, ideal numbers for those other divisions of the, uh, total population right, right up front so it's easy for people to just, you know, access it and there's a landing page, right? So, so everything needs to be crystal clear so you don't, you're not guessing, you know, what to do if you want to go with, um, the non-standard, I guess you'd say, uh, number of districts.
Okay, so I think I'm hearing, um, majority who wants to stay where we are, clear with the five. Um, and, uh, are there any other areas that we need to address this evening or we're just going to move on? I wonder if we could also, um, before we finish the public hearing, uh, recap what the next dates are of the meetings.
The next, um, item up is the community meeting next Thursday, the 16th, um, beginning at 6:00 PM in the multi, in the, excuse me, in the multipurpose room at the community center. After that would be the brunch at the senior center on the 24th. And then we have the third public hearing on February 18th. That's the next three items up.
And, and when would we see the maps that you're proposing?
So it needs to be posted on February 11th. Um, so I'll probably get that to staff earlier than that, just so they can have it and get it ready. That's a week in advance of the 18th.
And, and will those maps be ones that you're recommending or will they, we be getting it from the community meetings and the input? How's that going to work?
So we'll be drafting maps for you. It's not something we necessarily recommend, but it's something that us as professional demographers will put together. Um, I also highly encourage you to consider the public maps just as important. So you'll be getting all of those maps, all of them need to be posted, including the public maps by the 11th.
Okay.
One last thing, and I know that this might be extremely difficult, but on the community meetings, can we at least have an audio recording of those? Something that we can do because I think that not everybody can make every meeting and it would be nice, just, I know video, we have that all set up here in the chambers, but at least an audio, uh, recording of those community meetings?
We certainly can look into the feasibility of that.
I think that would be helpful too, yeah. Okay. Well then, um, we're, we're done with our public hearing. Thank you very much for that, uh, presentation and everybody's input. Keep, keep it coming. Thank you. We hope to see you at the community center and then for brunch. I like that. So, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on, uh, to old business, which we have none. And new business, we have none. So that's pretty easy. Uh, go to council reports on matters of interest occurring since previous regular meeting. Uh, who would like to start?
I've.
Councilmember Hagley?
I have a quick one, is a reminder that, uh, the Bucket Brigade is coming up this week. And then I have some good news I wanted to share from the NCPA front, if that's okay. Um, I actually reached out to our, our staff to make sure that I got it all right. So, um, this is one of the reasons we've been going back to Washington DC related to hydrogen and this 45V rule. And so this week, uh, Treasury slash IRS decision related to the implementation of the federal hydrogen tax credit known as 45V is, is very favorable for California and our ability to advance the hydrogen transition as proposed at the Lodi Energy Center. This week's final Treasury rules for the tax credit recognize that while hydrogen production is energy intensive, California and Washington's existing clean energy statutes will ensure that it is powered by the existing renewable resources that our customers have already paid, paid to bring onto our grid. So why this is important is California right now during peak, you know, in the summertime or peak, peak energy periods, the utilities are literally telling the, uh, solar farms, shut off your power, we'll still pay you, but there's too much energy that it results in negative pricing. So what we're going to be able to do, and this rule now allows us to, is use that, keep that energy, the clean energy coming and be able to use it to generate hydrogen that can be stored to be used later. So that's where this was a, a big battle because obviously there's concerns about other states that might use coal or other forms to generate hydrogen and that kind of is opposite of what we're trying to accomplish with clean hydrogen. So, uh, anyway, uh, as a result, NCPA will have access to the full hydrogen tax credit in addition to $50 million in federal and state grant funding to support the transition of the Lodi Energy Center to hydrogen. Uh, the net initial draft guidelines from Treasury would have placed unworkable requirements on access to the hydrogen credit, including the requirement that new hydrogen production be powered by newly constructed renewables. This would have been unworkable in our state as there's currently a decade-long wait to connect new projects to the transmission grid at the California Independent System Operator as we rapidly build out clean energy to meet our state climate goals. This would have significantly undermined and delayed the hydrogen transition in our state. With this final ruling, NCPA will be able to utilize excess renewables that are curtailed during, uh, due to over-generation during the day to power the electrolyzer at the Lodi Energy Center to produce hydrogen for use later in the day when the grid needs it most. So a huge, huge thank, thank you to Senator Padilla's office, uh, in ensuring that the Treasury's draft guidelines are modified to recognize the progress California has made toward decarbonization of our grid and to ensure that the federal hydrogen tax credit is available to keep the cost of this transition from natural gas to an emission-free resource affordable for California electric ratepayers, which is our community. And it looks like I cleared the room except for Tom, so, sorry about that. Yeah.
Well, I think that's all really, really good news. Thank you for that, for that effort, for those efforts. Yeah. Who wants to go next? Ron?
I'll go ahead. A short, uh, Chris, Vice Mayor, uh, attended the Russian River Water Set Association with me and, uh, Hillsburg, uh, participated in the, uh, Foss Creek report. We did really well in that, the Take Back Drug, uh, System. And Steelhead Festival will be on February 8th this year. So I wanted to let you give an update on that.
Vice Mayor?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, um, since the holiday, uh, um, you know, for a number of years, I kind of, uh, corralled a group of residents to do caroling in the, in the plaza after I got elected. I kind of got high busy, I guess, and it stopped happening for two years. But a couple of people said, let's do it again. So we did it again and it was really fantastic. It was the first time since we had the big tree that we did it, so it made kind of extra special and it was just a ton of fun for people to get together and sing and super informal and, um, and, uh, related to that, um, uh, on the 26th, we, um, had the, uh, Hanukkah lighting, uh, in the plaza, which is, it was just an amazing event with, it was raining like cats and dogs and tons of people showed up and it was this beautiful, uh, great sense of community. Um, uh, for those celebrating Hanukkah and others, everybody together just really kind of felt like, uh, uh, a beautiful star in the middle of a dark night and, um, and we had great food and it was really fantastic. And, uh, thank you, uh, Councilmember Kelly for your part in that, that's really spectacular event. And, uh, that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, and I can attest to the fun of the caroling. I loved it. Every minute, Tom and I were there and loved every minute of it.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
It was fun.
Yep.
Councilmember Kelly?
Uh, not a tundra report. I did attend the, the Hanukkah celebration and we had a huge turnout, which was wonderful and lots of local residents, um, lots of Jewish local residents, which we don't always get together in a big, you know, public way. So I thought that was really nice and I hope that we can figure out a way, um, for the city to support that event. I know that there is some challenges around the establishment clause where because it's perceived as religious, but the world's largest Christmas tree is not perceived as religious, um, the city's struggled to be able to support the Hanukkah event. And so I'd love for us to figure out a way for the Jewish community to not feel like gluing together, um, you know, a microphone that doesn't totally work and trying to make that functional. Um, it definitely feels a little bit, um, I don't know, like it's a less important, uh, celebration, which I know is not what the city is trying to, um, emote, but it definitely would, we would be, um, appreciative of having more city support to make it feel, um, even small and important, um, in comparison to Mary Hillsburg, which is a grand event. Um, and I saw the tree coming down today with all of its limbs sawed off and it just looked like a giant stick in the air that was very sad. And so, um, if you're feeling sad about the Christmas tree in the plaza, uh, don't go by there today because it looks extra sad. But I thought just all the holiday celebrations in town were really wonderful, especially during kind of the darkest time of year and, um, everything that, you know, goes on after election season, it's always nice to have the community get to come together in that way. And so I know it really was, um, a joyous time for all of the different celebrations and the caroling and it's just all the community traditions really make Hillsburg such a wonderful place to live. So, Happy New Year.
So with that, I will adjourn our meeting at 8:46.
Tom, come here.